It's getting even more nervous.
I call this meeting of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. Please remember to silence your cell phones. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kemp Smithson will offer the invocation.
Our dear and gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here today. And we ask for a blessing upon this town and the law enforcement of this town and the leadership. We also thank Thee for the moisture that we have received lately and ask Thee for more and to help protect us from fires. Please have Your Spirit be with us during this meeting so that we can be able to do our best. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Kemp. Good evening. My name is Grace Smithson. I am the Chairwoman for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. I am a senior in high school. I have been on Mayak for four years now, and I do dance and theater.
My name is Jackson Woods. I am a senior at Blue Ridge High School. This is the end of my second year on Mayak and I run cross-country at Blue Ridge.
My name is Jessie Stroop. I'm a junior at Blue Ridge High School and this is my third year on Mayak. I am also a member of FBLA and the Student Council.
My name's Adeline Cobb and I am a sophomore in high school and I have been on Mayak for one year and I am involved in student council and yearbook.
My name is Alice Shumway and I am a junior in high school. I have been in Mayak, well, this is my first year in Mayak and I am currently in honors choir at the Blue Ridge High School.
My name is Rockwell Rigg and I am a freshman at Blue Ridge High School and I like to ski and I'm currently on the track team.
My name is River Rigg. I am a senior in high school. This is my fourth year on Mayak and I like to do sports like soccer and wrestling.
My name is Kemp Smithson. I am a sophomore at Blue Ridge High School and this is my first year on Mayak and I run varsity, cross-country and track.
Thank you, guys. Item B is called to the public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The Town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in call to the public is limited by the open meeting laws. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. I have one call to the public by Tony Alba.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, members of the council, Chairwoman Smithson and members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. This is always one of my favorite meetings. Very proud of all of you. Here tonight to talk to you a little bit about our family Easter celebration, which will take place this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have a storm coming in. Depending on which forecast you look at, it's all over the board. But we are concerned about the safety and comfort of our guests and all of you. So we are moving that event here to Town Hall. It will take place here at Town Hall on a smaller scale than normal that we would do out at Woodland Lake Park. We did this last year too and it was an overwhelming success. So we invite all of the community to come out and visit with us, see the Easter Bunny, do our egg walk. The Rotary Club of the White Mountains, they say there's no such thing as a free lunch, but there is in this case. The Rotary Club of the White Mountains will be handing out hamburger and hot dog meals free of charge. They'll take donations, but that's optional. One meal per person that is in attendance. We will also have a coffee vendor on site. Really just a special day for our community and for the kids of our community. I know we have some members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee that will be coming out to help us. I'd like to extend an invitation again. I've heard from some of the council members that will be here to help. If you have an hour to spend, any time between 11:00 and 3:00, come on out and help distribute Easter baskets and interact with the kids. I think that's about it. Again, that is this Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. The visitor center is already very well decorated. Annie and Rob have done an outstanding job there. This will be transformed to the Easter Bunny's hideout tomorrow, once we get through this. So, thank you all very much. We look forward to seeing you here Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Alba. I have no other requests to speak in call to the public, so we will move on to item C. Item C, Consent Agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Town Council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda are considered in their normal sequence as listed on the agenda unless called out of sequence. There is one item on the consent agenda. Item C1, Consider Approval of the Minutes of the Town Council Regular Meeting Held on April 3rd, 2025. I would entertain a motion.
For Councilmember Turner, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion for Councilmember Phillips.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That carries unanimously. Item D is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on the agenda item before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to a staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation, National Wildfire Community Preparedness Month, May 2025.
This is a proclamation of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Office of Mayor Stephanie Irwin, National Wildfire Community Preparedness Month, May 2025. Whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside is committed to saving lives and protecting the community through prevention, preparedness, and emergency response in a timely, courteous, and effective manner; whereas National Wildfire Awareness Month dedicates the entire month of May to prevention and preparedness that focuses on what residents can do around their home to help protect against the threat of wildfires; and whereas, as the weather becomes warmer and wildland vegetation or fuels begin to dry out, it is time to plan for the wildfires, and...
Whereas, residents have the power to protect the part of the community that means the most to them by firewising their properties by eliminating vulnerabilities in the home ignition zone, particularly the immediate five-foot zone around their residence. And whereas, hardening homes to ember intrusion and creating defensible space to address vulnerabilities such as firewood piles, unmaintained landscape, and lawn debris around the residence makes a difference in preventing the spread of fires. And whereas, it is essential to educate our residents on their part in the prevention of wildfires and how to protect the community and avoid loss and tragedy. Now therefore I, Jackson Woods, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Wildfire Community Preparedness Month in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done on the 17th day of April, 2025. To help prepare the community for wildfire season, the Pine Top Lakeside Collection Center is offering free residential green waste disposal through April 28th.
Thank you, committee members. Item D2 is Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation, National Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025.
This is the proclamation from the Town of Pine Top Lakeside Office of Mayor Stephanie Irwin on National Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. Whereas, trees are one of the primary quality of life factors that a town government can provide for its citizens and whereas, trees will continue to provide the community with colors, flowers, and beautiful landscapes that can be enjoyed by all citizens. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, the temp, moderate the temperature, clean the air, increase oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and...
Whereas, trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the Town of Pine Top Lakeside has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 40th year and desires to continue its tree planting ways. And now therefore, I, Adeline Cobb, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 Arbor Day, 2025 in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our town's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done the 17th day of April, 2025, at the Pine Top Lakeside Council Chambers.
Thank you, committee members. Item D3, Town of Pine Top Lakeside Proclamation, Frontline Worker Appreciation Month, May 2025.
Whereas, frontline workers are the builders of our community, exercising curiosity, compassion, courage, and creativity to provide essential services that ensure the safety, health, and education of our residents. And whereas, over nine million healthcare workers across the United States serve in hospitals, clinics, and long-term care facilities, often placing themselves at risk to provide lifesaving care. And whereas, firefighters respond to an estimated 36 million emergency calls each year and over 800,000 sworn law enforcement officers nationwide work tirelessly to uphold the law and ensure public safety. And medical, emergency medical services personnel respond to more than 240 million calls annually, and...
Whereas, teachers dedicate their careers to shaping the future of our communities, with over 3.7 million educators in the U.S. providing knowledge and guidance to our youth. And whereas, frontline workers embody the essence of builders, flexible thinkers and construction, and constructive problem solvers, who respect the dignity of all people by dedicating themselves to overcoming challenges and uniting communities. Now therefore, I, River Rigg, for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Frontline Worker Appreciation Month in the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and honoring the heroic contributions of all our healthcare workers, firefighters, law enforcement officers, EMS personnel, and teachers. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Arizona, done at Town Hall, done at Town Hall, this 17th day of April, 2025.
Thank you, committee members. Item D4, Information, Discussion, and Consider Accepting a Right-of-Way Dedication Deed from Mark J. Larson, a successor trustee of the Larson Living Trust for secondary access from State Route 260 to Springer Mountain Drive. Public Works Director Patterson will present.
Good evening, Mayor and council and Mayak members. It's good to be in front of you guys again. It was about a year ago that we accepted the right-of-way in this area. However, there was an area of that right-of-way that was donated from the town to the Larson Trust to build landscaping throughout the town. We did this in a lot of areas in town where we donated section of the 260 corridor to help businesses so that they would improve it and make our town look nicer. However, that didn't travel along with the parcels when they were being sold and moved around. So when we did the right-of-way about a year ago, it, we didn't catch that there was another underlying property that needed to be added to that right-of-way. So here we are, a year later, and we will be accepting this right-of-way that's very important to connecting Springer Mountain Drive. There's about 800 cars a day. The average ADT coming out of Springer Mountain Drive is about 800 cars that travel through a subdivision to get to 260. And we talk about wildfire, we talk about all these other things that are important. Access for these people to get out is also important. So that's what this today will help with, is to help clean up that right-of-way so we have a new connection from 260 to the Springer Mountain Drive road, so.
Thank you. Do any committee members of couns, do any committee members or council members have questions or comments for Mr. Patterson? I would entertain a motion.
For Vice Mayor Buse, I move to approve the right-of-way dedication deed from Mark J. Larson as successor trustee of the Larson Living Trust to complete the required right-of-way for secondary access from State Route 260 to Springer Mountain Drive.
I second the motion for Councilmember Smith.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hands. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D5, Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee Presentation and Acknowledgement of Mayak Graduating Seniors.
About us, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee provides a voice for youth in the community by bringing youth issues to the Town Council and Town Manager and assisting them in understanding youth concerns. It also is an opportunity for the students who serve on the committee to learn about the civic process, to gain experience in governance, and to become leaders in the community.
The members of the Mayak have an opportunity to go to the League of Cities and Towns Annual Conference for a day. There, we're able to network with other Mayaks as well as learn valuable leadership skills. Last year's theme was all about standing up for what you believe in. And we got to listen to some really great speakers talk about really important skills that we could, that we will be able to apply as we grow older. It also helped us to find new ideas. As you can see, we're posing in front of a little poster for our town. A lot of Mayaks had that, along with events that they were planning. And we were able to talk to other Mayaks and potentially work with them to create new and important things for our town.
Many local kids receive free breakfast and lunch at school but don't have anything in the pantry for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Backpack Snacks is a local organization dedicated to providing children with free food over the weekend. Mayak has been running a food drive for Backpack Snacks to support the White Mountains. Mayak and Town Council members have also helped organize, self, and pack food for students.
Autumn Fest was an incredible community event that brought everyone together for a fun-filled day. The Town Council and the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee had a great time engaging and connecting with family and friends. We were in the plastic ax throwing game where kids could win little squishies, keychain stuffed animals, and candy as prizes. It was heartwarming to see so many smiles and so much laughter throughout the day. We were also joined by our amazing first responders who connected with families and added to the welcoming atmosphere. One of the highlights was the Chili Cook-Off where everyone got to taste some delicious and creative recipes from local cooks. A live band kept the energy high with great music. And there was a costume contest for all ages that showcased our community's unique creativity with outfits ranging from spooky to silly and everything in between. Overall, it was a fantastic event full of fun, connection, and community spirit, and we're already looking forward to next year.
So every year, our local police departments, with their sirens and sleigh bells at fence, it takes place every December where they shop at Walmart to gather essential items for Christmas for families in need. And Mayak, for the past few years, has set up donation boxes and gotten many generous donations from our community to buy or receive hygiene items and toys to give to the police departments so that they can hand those out to kids and families in need at the sirens and sleigh bells event.
As part of Mayak, we set many different goals at the beginning of the year. And one of our main goals that we've had for the past four years since I've been on Mayak is to try and bridge the gap between the elderly and the youth in our community. And one of the ways we do that in our community is through serving lunch at the community center. This activity, we get to take part in once a month. And basically, we leave school and we go to the community center and we serve lunch to those people there. Now, this activity is fun for a few different reasons. The first reason is, I mean, you get in this school and you get to go someplace else, which is always pretty fun. The second reason is that you get to serve other people food. You get to be kind of like, be like a waiter, and that's normally pretty fun. But the third reason is my favorite reason, and that is, after you serve them all their food, you get to sit down with these elderly people and you get to talk to them, you get to eat this meal with them. And that is the best part of this activity because you get to learn about their different life experiences, their different hobbies, and what they like to do. Because a lot of these people just want to be heard. And so that is possibly, that is not possible, that is my favorite part of what we do here in Mayak, is serving lunch at the community center because you can really make a difference through that. And I've witnessed that in my own life and some of their lives as well.
One of the many activities that Mayak has the pleasure of participating in is the annual tree lighting for the Christmas season. And the people of the town gather in festive cheer to celebrate the Christmas season, the Christmas tree at Bart, Jack Barker Memorial Park to officially kick off the holiday season. And so, Mayak members had the privilege to connect with the young and old in our community and we decided to serve out some craft bags and some little hot cocoa packets for the kids to have as well as some of the elderly inside our community. And so, to get them excited to meet Santa, Santa and more. And overall, we assist in any way that is needed to make the amazing town event even more magical for the citizens of Pine Top Lakeside. And we look forward to participating in it. Again, every year is a really fun event to help with.
So, one of my favorite parts about Mayak is every year, in the springtime, we get to go take a tour of the Public Works Department and we see how they're maintaining all of the town vehicles. They're working on all the police department vehicles and the maintenance trucks and the big, heavy equipment and things like that. So we get to see some of the projects they're doing and some of the planning they're doing. So, that's kind of a cool look into the behind-the-scenes of our town. And we also get to have some hands-on experience climbing into that, some of the big machines. That's definitely my favorite part. We really enjoy doing that.
Thank you, committee members. I would now meet my fellow graduating Mayak members at the podium, along with Mayor Irwin, and we'll turn the time over to her.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, Grace. You did a beautiful job leading this, this meeting and the rest of the committee. You all had a great part in that, so thank you for that. Thank you to Christie and to Mackenzie for putting that script together for the kids. It's been my privilege to work with all of these young people during the course of the year and some of them for four years, as you heard, Grace and River have been on this committee for four years. And it's been a lot of fun to watch them grow from the shy freshmen, who we've got one of our incoming members sitting back here, to these confident, capable, young people who are ready to go out and face the world. So I have got some little plaques of appreciation for each one of you that I'm going to present. And then I would like to allow each of you to tell us a little bit about your experience, what meant the most. I think we heard from River already. But what you're going to do next year, you know, when you graduate, and what we could look forward to from you. So this is in grateful recognition to Jackson Woods for your dedication and service to the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council.
Jackson, thank you. I've got one for River, again, for your dedication and service.
And Grace, you've done a great job as chairperson. Okay, and I'll invite you each to speak. Grace, you can go first.
All right. My favorite thing that I, about Mayak, is learning that anyone can make a difference. You know, no matter how young or old you are, you can be a part of your community and you can be a part of your town and you can go and you can speak out and you can let issues that are here, you can let them be known, but you can also just go and have so much fun with your friends and your family and people you've never met. And I've just loved being able to make a change in our town. And I love this town. I plan to go to NAU. I want to become an elementary teacher. And I hope to eventually come back here and teach in our local schools. So, thank you, everyone, for all the support and love you've given all of us over the years. And for all you Mayak members, you guys are going to do great things.
Thank you. So, one of my favorite parts of Mayak has been being able to go around to all of the different town offices and just kind of being able to see how our town functions day-to-day. It's actually pretty cool, all of the work that goes into making a town run. And I can't even imagine being the mayor of Phoenix or something because that would be crazy. So, just all, you know, our little town that we have, all of the work that goes into it has been really cool to see. We've been able to go to the police department and the public works department and probably others that I'm forgetting too, but it's been a great experience. And so that's, that's the biggest lesson that I've learned is that you have, you have to appreciate everyone who puts in just a little bit. Right, it takes a village, and so that's been something that I've been able to be a part of, and that's been really cool. I'm planning on serving a mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I put my paperwork in on Monday, so we'll find out where I'm headed soon. And after that, I'll be going to BYU to study business.
As I previously stated, my name is River Rigg and I'm graduating this year. And my current plan is to go to Chile and serve my mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And so I will be there for two years. Then after that, I'm going to go to college somewhere, not exactly positive yet, where yet, but I'll figure that out eventually, you know. But I think the most impactful part to me from Mayak has been serving lunch at the community center. And that part is truly meant the most to me because I feel like a lot of times I dread coming to the meetings early in the morning. I dread coming to the meetings early in the morning, you know, 7:00 a.m. Like, I don't really want to spend my morning that way. But I think, like, I've learned a lot from it, but the best part, hands down, has been serving lunch at the community center. And I think, though, what that has taught me is not only just, like, helping others, but that you don't exactly have to be a part of one of these big councils, you know? You don't have to be the mayor of Pinetop Lakeside. You don't have to be one of these council members and be able to help out at the town. Because, just because I'm on Mayak doesn't mean that I can only help out the town while I'm at Mayak. Because I've learned that although, while I can just serve lunch while I'm in Mayak, I can also go there and have lunch with these people and still help out in any way I can without being on Mayak. And that just made me realize that you can still help out your town, no matter where you are in life, not just whether you're in one of these fancy chairs or sitting in the audience, you know? And I just, I think that's the most impactful part from Mayak, is learning that you can serve others no matter where you are.
I just want to thank all of you. As you guys can see, these kids are amazing. They're very involved. Their academics, athletics, music, everything you could imagine. And so we're really blessed to have them as part of our community. And I think some of them have received some incredible scholarships. I'm just going to brag on Grace, who's received the Flynn Scholarship, which is a pretty prestigious award. And so I'm just really very proud to have known her and watched her over the last four years, as I value all of you guys. So thank you for coming tonight, and don't leave, because we need a picture. Okay, all right, thank you.
It has been our pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of the Town Council. This meeting is adjourned at 6:28.